Is saying, um, capital. A dry cleaning academy before.
Before, okay.
Yeah, but when, when they all hit sixty-five, they retired and sold it to them.
My air must have been back.
Yeah, but, uh. So I've been in my house for a few years.
Yeah, so we go, we go in the house since, yeah, before I was nineteen seventy-four, I think my grandpa, my grandparents built the house.
Yes, sir, you are.
We are.
Is this all the, this is getting on the tracks already? Regular business meeting to order for the team of twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three, wow. Uh, Christine, can you please read the opening statement?
Since entering the Open Color Meetings Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice of these meetings as required by said act has been provided by adopting a schedule of regular monthly meetings for the year two thousand twenty-three, which is also included on the Bureau Hall Bulletin Board mail to the South Jersey newspapers and filed with the Bureau of Commerce.
Parrot, please rise from the seat flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the whole call, please.
John Alice.
Here.
Edwina Moonen.
Here.
Diane Camiola.
Here.
Charles Harvey Excuse, Joseph Santora.
Here.
George Smith.
Here.
William Turner.
Here.
Michelle Wyman.
Here.
David Lopez.
Here.
Steve Casabon.
Here.
Ashton James.
Here.
All right, Mr. Alice, can you swear on our questions? Certainly. A gentleman, like, do you raise your right hand? And do each of you swear a firm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information and belief?
Yes, I do.
It's two yeses, Mr. Chair. All right. Everybody has a copy of the minutes. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Am I gonna have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion, we approve the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so be it. All right, everybody has a copy of the bills. Do I have a motion to see all bills?
Move, we pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Let him make it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so be it. Incoming and outgoing billings, correspondents, do you have any?
Uh, we have a letter from Mr. McKenna about any joint freight that will be attending the June fifteenth meeting. Our letters from Remington and Vernic, uh, for South Jersey Gas and for Burger King, and letters for Sickleston Associates regarding Burger King.
Great. We also did receive a letter of resignation from, uh, Mr. Frankie Jimenez, um, which has been sent and accepted. I would just like to thank Frankie for all his years of service on the board. He will be sorely missed, however, he'll be enjoying his time in sunny Florida, so. Okay, public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda this evening? Nope, great. All right, let's go with, um, our first is postponed to June fifteenth, so ZB twenty-three dash zero five, amended freight has been postponed to June fifteenth, then we'll be notifying everybody. So let's move on to ZB twenty-three dash zero four, Swab Enterprises, five oh three North Delsey Drive, lot four ten, lot two point like zero one. It's a C four zone, amended preliminary and final site plan for approved conditional use.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Robert Mintz, on behalf of the applicant. This evening, Swab Enterprises LLC is before you. There's no microphone here, is that what's happening? I should be going if the.
You can do it there, we can hear you.
Grab it.
The, uh, it's the first time I've, I'm taller than the microphone. The application this evening is for Swab Enterprises LLC. Um, we have a number of witnesses for you that are the chair witnesses, and we can ask one together.
That's fine. All right, gentlemen, I'm gonna ask each of you to raise your right hand. And do each of you swear a firm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information and belief?
I do.
Well, that's great, and perhaps Mr. Mintz will introduce each of you, you know, in advance of your testimony.
This is Art Jake Greenblatt. How you doing, guys? I'm A.J. Greenblatt from, uh, Swab Enterprises and Matt Blatt Dealerships, uh, thanking coming out tonight.
Looking at my chatroom as well?
Yes.
Yep.
James Thaun, from Buller, a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is outstanding. I have appeared before numerous boards throughout the state of New Jersey as an expert, uh, numerous applications of similar nature to the one before you tonight.
Or, you tell it.
If, if the chair witnesses, we can go into curriculum review in order to have him acknowledge.
No, Mr. Mintz, you, you used the gentleman and other applications and other matters, and he's appeared in other boards, so welcome to Glassboro.
Thank you.
Uh, David Horner, uh, traffic engineer for the project, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, certified traffic operations engineer, and have also appeared before, not only in Glassboro, but maybe just out in the air.
We've seen Mr. Horner around now, Mr. Chairman, so welcome to Glassboro.
Good evening, Craig Rankin, a licensed professional planner. I've been in the field forty-one years, licensed in New Jersey for twenty-five. I'll stop there unless you keep, make me keep going. License is currently valid.
Look, no, we're well acquainted, um, you know, maybe painfully.
Don't speak, buddy.
Uh, Eric Lockey, I've been a consultant, design consultant particularly for four years, uh, had experience in PA, New Jersey, uh, for about twenty, so the insights.
We're not, uh, not asking to give you the knowledge as an expert, you have.
Well, that's what I was asking, if, if.
The operating, yeah, this is for the operation.
Gotcha.
So this application, uh, was advertised, notice was sent, the confirmation of, uh, current pack payment has, has been submitted. It is lot, uh, one four zero, lot two point oh one. The, uh, prior, for this orientation, the board members may recall the prior bowling alley that was closed for numerous years was, uh, all part of a center that included Save-A-Lot that was closed, I think, even more years than, uh, than the bowling alley. And while the two, what we want to do to you are in the same ownership, the application is before you this evening, it's only with respect to the area, with bowling alley as a previously located. Uh, this is a request to amend the preliminary approval, which is, uh, previously granted by this board, and to allow final, uh, site plan approval with certain variances that we have advertised. Uh, this particular lot came before you, uh, and received approval for the Matt Blatt dealership inventory display parking. And that use is already on the lot and has been implemented. There's another half of the lot between the auto dealership inventory and the central drive aisle, and that central drive aisle is pretty much the outer perimeter of the lot. Uh, that area, although maybe it has a few cars on it today, that area would be, is proposed for a Chick-fil-A, uh, drive-through restaurant. When we came before you, uh, for the preliminary approval, the board considered the location for several thousand square feet of retail, um, and a drive-through use, and approved that use. This evening, we'll just confirm to you that that use is the, is the operation that we have, and we'll, uh, provide you information that the stacking is correct and, uh, utilization like that. So this is a unique situation that we have two uses, we're having given that permission earlier, two uses on one lot, two commercial uses on one lot. The, um, the approval per, previously, uh, allowed for certain other aspects of the driveway. These two locations, the Save-A-Lot and the, uh, and the bowling alley, use the central driveway between Delsey Drive and Main Street. And that has, although it's a private drive aisle, it really is used as a customer by the public. And to that extent, about three-quarters of it, we, we have provided the correct survey information to your, uh, your professional staff, but about three-quarters of that driveway is on the site that we're speaking of this evening, and then the other quarter is on the Save-A-Lot, so. We're pleased that, that, uh, the Green Black family has been able to, uh, come forward and bring this location to you. And my first witness is, uh, is A.J. Greenblatt, who will, who, what, A.J.? A.J., if you would just introduce yourself to the board and tell them the little bit of the background, your family businesses here, the utilization of these two lots.
Yeah, well, first off, thank you guys for having me. I'm A.J. Greenblatt with Matt Blatt Dealerships and Swab Enterprises. Um, my family's operated a, a really successful business in Glassboro since the early nineties in nineteen ninety-two. Um, and when we were able to get the bowling alley to kind of expand our lot, um, we kind of thought about the rejuvenation of, of that area, um, and how we can kind of come together and use two spaces, one for the Chick-fil-A, the, the Save-A-Lot for a deal that we're, um, we're brokering with, with Liscios that we have signed. That will come for you at another time. Um, but we want to make that area really nice, and when we've been here for a while, I'm, I'm the next generation coming into, coming into Glassboro. I, I've lived in Long Boulevard, worked in this dealership for, uh, for about ten years now, so, you know, we're expanding and, and we're just really excited to have this opportunity to be able to do that. So thank you guys for having us.
Is there any, is there any questions, A.J.?
That's good.
No, I think you're cool. Thank you, yeah.
That's good.
So A.J. referenced the fact that, that there's another application that hopefully will come forward shortly. Uh, that is, the Save-A-Lot was a separate lot, totally separate lot, totally different ownership before it was acquired by the Green Black family in one of their entities. And, uh, as a result, the conversion of the building, the updating of the building, is already determined to be a permitted use. And because it is permitted, and because it's a separate lot, it becomes a separate application which goes to the planning board, just jurisdictional, but, uh, there's, on that lot, there's very little that is, uh, that is proposed, and we'll be bringing that to the planning board shortly. The reason we raise it with you is you will hear testimony this evening that some of the parking for the Chick-fil-A is going to be on that lot and will be leased from that entity. Uh, the, and we'll have, uh, a breakdown for you as well. And one of the important points to, to present to you is that when you take the, uh, Liscio square footage, and they're taking the entire square footage, with the exception of the auto building, it's not on a separate lot, a third lot. Uh, when you take the square footage of the Liscio area and you calculate, as we will show you this evening, the parking requirement, there is a significant excess of parking. And so by taking that excess, we're able to utilize that for tonight's application of the Chick-fil-A. One of the things that we're asking you for this evening is a variance to permit parking off-site, because as I said, these are two separate lots. And the variances could permit this parking to be off-site. We, we understand that, and we'll have a lease that we'll be happy to share with your solicitor to show that we do, we do have control. But the fact is, both of those lots, both of the bowling alley and the old Save-A-Lot, uh, are both controlled by the, the Green Black family, just in separate entities. So with that, and we asked our engineer, we'll give you a, a review of the project. James Siskin, by way of, uh, of introduction, do you either supervise work going on or review the, the matter and have information on the, the production of the product, work product in your office?
Uh, yes, that's correct. So I think that's all, if, if there are exhibits that we should mark to the board, you can refer to them in the board's office. So the first exhibit I'd like to present to the board is an aerial exhibit prepared by Buller. It's dated February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna mark it as A-one on the top left of the page. To the benefit of the board, more to this oriented to the top left corner of the page. And the site that we're looking at is located in the center of the page indicated by the yellow outline around it. Everyone see this okay?
Yeah.
All right. So the property that we're looking at tonight is known as five oh three Delsey Drive.
I apologize for that. Uh, I don't know if there's a member, any public members in, they need to be able, they should be able to see the. If it's all right with the chair, we'll pull this back slightly and hang with it if you want to come forward with the exhibit. And, uh, is, is this exhibit, uh, in, in the original packet?
No.
In front. So this is A-one, and that's an arrow?
Correct. So it's, the site that we're looking at is five oh three Delsey Drive, and it's more specifically known as block four ten, lot two point zero one. And lot two point zero one, uh, located in the center of the page, that is two and a half acres, and it's located in the C four highway and automotive district. So further acclimate to you to exactly where we're talking about here, what I'll do is briefly describe the surrounding area. So first, uh, directly north of the project is lot two point oh three. You're gonna hear a lot about that, and I'm gonna provide a little bit more clarification on the parking that Mintz, or Mintz just, uh, discussed. On lot two, two point oh three is a former, uh, Save-A-Lot's retail building, and then to the northeast of that is an existing auto zone. And what you'll see is there's a lot of shared access between the lots that I'll describe shortly. East of the project is Delsey Drive, which is a state Route forty-seven. South of the project is the Matt Blatt, uh, dealership. And, uh, west of the project, uh, on the bottom of the page is Main Street. So now to zero in on the site itself, and really the star of the show that we're talking about tonight, first we'll talk about how do you set there today. And we'll do so by starting on Delsey Drive, which is on the eastern side of the property, and on the northeastern corner of that property is an existing full movement driveway that provides access to the state road. South of that, on Delsey Drive, on the southeastern corner of the property, is also an existing full movement driveway that provides access, uh, to the vehicle inventory area, uh, that was discussed a moment ago. Then looking to the other side, or the bottom of the page on North Main Street, starting on the southwestern corner, there's a full movement driveway as part of this application. So on the southern side of the site, those two full movement driveways will not be changed as part of this application. On the northwestern side of the site is an existing full movement driveway. That's actually approximately sixty feet wide. And so one of the facets that you'll see that we tried to make better as part of this proposal is to make that a little bit more controlled than it is today. In the center of the page, you'll see an area, uh, where there was formerly a pad, uh, that was the bowling alley that was also, uh, discussed earlier. And you'll see the remnants of that pad, as well as the associated asphalt parking areas and drive aisles that are around that. And more specifically, on the southern side of the site, you'll see, uh, what is new pavement and new striping, and that's specifically where the Matt Blatt dealership is using, uh, for vehicle inventory in that location. There are a lot of shared access that happened with this site, uh, especially with lot two point oh three, which is, uh, directed to the north, uh, of, uh, the site that's shown in yellow there. And so there are shared access drives on the, uh, eastern and western sides of the site that provides access to, uh, the parking field to the north, as well as ultimately to the auto zone further north of that. And again, that circulation connectivity is really an important facet of the site. Currently, uh, impervious coverage is ninety point four percent, which does not comply with town code, where twenty percent is required, so you'll hear a little bit about that momentarily. And the minimum landscape coverage is fifteen percent required, whereas only nine point six percent is proposed as part of the current, uh, site layout, which also doesn't conform with code. We're gonna be making that better as part of this application. And lastly, there is an existing, uh, conformance with respect to lot depth, where two hundred feet is required, and a hundred and sixty-eight point eight feet exists today, but will be unchanged as part of this application. So next what I'm going to do is introduce our second exhibit. We're gonna mark this as exhibit A-two. This, these are invisible, I believe. So this exhibit is prepared by Buller and is dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. It's a replication of the site layout plan that was submitted as part of the application packet with a couple caveats to that. We've superimposed a landscape on top, we've added an aerial background, and we've made some modifications to the pedestrian connectivity, uh, that was aptly mentioned by your board professionals that I'm gonna describe to you briefly. Uh, before I do, uh, really the star of the show is in the center of the page. Uh, it's the, uh, the building that has that tan color, it's a five thousand four hundred square foot Chick-fil-A building with associated drive-through. Again, as a housekeeping item, uh, as part of this, what you'll see is that we are showing some improvements on the northern side of lot two point oh three. That is for graphical and depiction purposes only. As was mentioned by the project attorney, that is under a separate application by the planning board. We wanted to, uh, give this board a sense of what that would look like, since we're relying on those improvements as part of the overall design. The Chick-fil-A has sixty-two indoor seats and a total of twenty-four outdoor, uh, tables, uh, for a total of eighty-six seats, uh, within the building itself and on the exterior. And there's a total of thirty-two vehicles that are, um, able to stack at this facility, and I'll talk about the circulation momentarily, but it's important to note that a minimum of eight is required by your code, so we're compliant with that. Impervious coverage for the site is being significantly reduced as part of this by eleven point six percent compared to the existing conditions. So the impervious coverage is seventy-eight point eight percent, slightly higher than what was originally submitted, and I'll describe why with respect to some circulation sidewalks that we added based on board comments. The minimum landscape coverage is sixteen point two percent, whereas nine point six percent was previously proposed, we eliminated, uh, a variance in that perspective. Um, briefly talking about the site itself, uh, the site is watered to the north by two public rights and ways, therefore there are two front yards on this through, uh.
Forgive me, did you say sixteen percent after improvements, or after the?
Correct, sixteen point two percent.
Thank you.
So the site has two front yards, being the state road and, and Main Street on the south, which is under county jurisdiction. And so with that, there are two front yards that need to be complied with. The physical building itself that you see in the center of the page that has that tan color is at the fifty-foot mark. However, there are two canopies that I'm gonna walk over and show you. One on the, uh, southern side of the page for Main Street, and one on the northern side of the page that are really important to the overall flow and circulation of the site that do not comply with code. Therefore, we are asking this board forward for relief for those, where we have a two-point-nine-foot, uh, setback to the canopy, uh, which is an open canopy along, uh, Main Street and twenty-one, twenty-nine feet off of Delsey Drive. In addition, as I mentioned before, we are reducing the impervious coverage, however, we're still not compliant with code with a maximum of twenty percent, but we are asking for relief for seventy-eight point eight percent impervious proposed. Now what we'll do is let's take you on a tour of the site, how you're gonna access it and circulate around it. To do so, we're first going to start off of, uh, Route forty-seven on the top of the page, and like I said, the northeastern driveway is the only one that's changed as part of this application. And so what we've done is provided a thirty-foot wide full movement driveway largely in the same location as it exists, uh, today, but with some striping and curving and pavement modifications in that area. On Main Street, as I mentioned before, the existing driveway is about sixty feet wide, and we'd like to get more control on that driveway, so we've made it twenty-four feet wide, and it still remains to be a full movement driveway in that location. In addition, once you enter the site, you're greeted by a twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle which complies with code, and those twenty-four-foot drive aisles allow you to have accessibility in and around the, uh, northern parking field of the Chick-fil-A building itself, and also provide access, uh, further north to lot two point oh three, where there's those shared access points, uh, throughout the site. If you're to enter the site, you have the ability to access on this, the southern side of the page, the drive-through queue itself. And so what you'll see in those, those two dots that are, uh, throughout the page, we've superimposed what the car stacking would look like as part of this application. And as I mentioned, there are a total of thirty-two cars that are able to stack at this location at ten-foot wide drive-through lanes. There are two drive-through lanes that are proposed closer to the building, and on the outside is a bypassing lane. And it's important to note that we have closed off access to the Matt Blatt inventory parking area, because we want to minimize any potential conflict, uh, with the drive-through operation. Parking for the site complies with the size required by code at ten foot by twenty foot required, uh, and there's a total of eighty-nine parking spaces that are required for the Chick-fil-A itself. And so as part of that, on lot two point oh one itself, only relating to Chick-fil-A itself, there's forty-three parking spaces that are proposed north of the Chick-fil-A building, dedicated exclusively to Chick-fil-A. Further north of that, there's a row of parking of twenty-three parking spaces that's exclusively dedicated to Chick-fil-A on lot two point oh three. Your board professionals ask that we provide adequate signage of that row of twenty-three to ensure that people know that that is Chick-fil-A parking only, so be happy to work with your professionals on adequate signage with respect to that. Further north of that row of twenty-three spaces is a row of twenty-four spaces, and I'll show you, I'll point to it now. Row of twenty-three is here, row of twenty-four is further north of there, where I pointed to with my pen. That row of twenty-four spaces is shared. So the combination of the three rows of parking that I just described puts up a total to ninety spaces proposed. Adequate parking is provided, and it's important to note that your professionals ask for proper easements to be put in place to show that there's a clear in place to allow that, which will be provided should this be approved. Uh, in addition, there are a total of three electric vehicle parking spaces that are proposed, which actually slightly reduce the parking count, um, to eighty-six spaces required, but nonetheless, still compliant. On lot two point oh three itself, that lot is still compliant with code. A hundred and eighty-three total parking spaces exist on lot two point oh three, based on the modifications to strike that you're seeing on this. A hundred and sixty of those are gonna be used directly for lot two point oh three. A hundred and thirty-six are exclusive to the retail use on that lot, and twenty-four of them are shared. So with that, only one hundred and five spaces are required on that lot. So as you can see, it's fully compliant with respect to how it's, uh, it's parked, on its own. Uh, in addition to that, it's important to note how does the site load? So a W B fifty is the standard-sized truck that Chick-fil-A uses, and you'll hear some operational testimony which is pertinent to what time of day does it come and how frequently does it come? But when it does come, it enters the site, or penetrates the site off of Route forty-seven, it has the ability to circulate around, uh, the Chick-fil-A in front of the building itself. Uh, and then it has the ability to circulate throughout the site and to exit, uh, while minimizing any impact to the circulation of drive aisles. And it's important to note that it really comes off as peak hour, and therefore there's minimal traffic on the site for the conflict with it. Trash for the site is handled via trash enclosure on the eastern side, uh, near Route forty-seven. Uh, we feel that the trash enclosure is located in the appropriate location, although in the front yard. It has approximate, it has proximity to the building itself, where employees are going to be able to exit the building to bring trash and to use it adequately. The standard UG thirty box truck or garbage truck has the ability to circulate around the building and access the trash enclosure satisfactorily. There are some variances and waivers that we're requesting of the board as it relates, uh, to loading and parking. So first, starting off with loading spaces, we're requesting a waiver as one loading space is required by code, whereas no dedicated loading space is proposed. That's really customary to quick-serve restaurants, as is this one, and given how the site flows and operates and location of access, uh, to the loading area in the building itself, a dedicated loading space isn't required. And again, we're gonna hear some operational testimony really how that works. In addition, we're asking for a variance, uh, because parking areas must be set back fifteen feet from the property line, whereas we're five point two feet off of Main Street and nine point six feet off of Delsey Drive. Along the same vein, um, there's some similar variances or waivers. Uh, a fifteen-foot buffer is required, uh, between property lines and edge of pavements, uh, as well as a twenty-five-foot, uh, buffer when there's a drive aisle that is parallel with the main road. And so again, that five point, uh, that two-foot mark and nine point six-foot mark are all relevant to those various waivers that we're requesting relief from the board. Uh, it's important to note that utilities are available to the site off of either Main Street or Delsey, and the site is not considered a major development pursuant to D E P criteria as it relates to stormwater management. But the benefit of this site is that we're reducing impervious coverage, which means there's a natural benefit and a reduction of water quality, uh, actually providing more recharge, uh, and quantity reduction for the site. The landscaping for the site, uh, I believe is attractive. As you can see, there's a number of different shade trees, uh, evergreens, perennials, and shrubs that are interspersed throughout the parking field, as well as lawn areas. Uh, we are requesting relief as it relates to the number of total, uh, trees required, as there's thirty-seven required and thirty-one proposed by code, uh, by the plan based on, uh, availability of space. as there's thirty-seven required and thirty-one proposed by code, uh, by the plan based on, uh, availability of space. Uh, when a parking area has, uh, more than twenty vehicles, uh, between different lots, there must be ten foot of space provided. However, uh, we're providing less than that on the southern side of the site. Um, oh, I apologize. On the northern side of the site, where there is the, is the, uh, shared drive aisle and curved island between lot two point oh three and, uh, to the lot to the south. But like we talked about, there's shared use and connectivity, uh, between them. Uh, in addition to that, um, uh, all areas in the parking lot need to be, uh, adequately landscaped. And as, as such, there needs to be combination of plantings. Along the front facade of the building, uh, on the north of the Chick-fil-A, you'll see that there's no, uh, planting directly in that area, which is customary for a use like this where to try to minimize the ability for trash to collect in areas like that. I did want to briefly go back because I realized in circulation I breezed over it. Uh, one of the professionals, uh, wanted to discuss the circulation or the, uh, ability for pedestrians that park in the row of twenty-three or twenty-four spaces to get adequately over to the Chick-fil-A building. And so as part of that, what we did was, and which is why we have a slight increase in impervious from what was submitted, was we added, uh, sidewalk connectivity on both the eastern and western side of the site where we are providing access for, uh, pedestrians to go in either direction based on proximity, uh, to those sidewalks to then be able to circulate, uh, around through a dedicated crosswalk and access point on a controlled intersection, which is typical for crosswalks to be located at on both the eastern and western sides of the sites. And then in addition to that, we provided pedestrian connectivity, uh, from the public rights way on either side of the building directly to the Chick-fil-A entrances, which I think enhances the overall circulation. It was a, a very good comment from your professionals. Uh, in addition to that, as it relates to circulation, they asked that we consider, uh, adding a mid-block crossing along main street, uh, specifically at the green avenue, uh, intersection, I think for the idea of connectivity of those, uh, who might be across the street there and trying to get across to Chick-fil-A. And we'd be happy to do so in conjunction with Gloucester County. It is under their jurisdiction and so we've, uh, worked with them if they'd be amenable to do that. Moving over to, uh, the lighting for the site, um, there are various, uh, pole-mounted light fixtures that are, uh, proposed at twenty-foot, twenty-five foot high, uh, which complies with code. Uh, we are requesting a waiver as it relates to the, uh, average foot candles required by code is two foot and not more than that, whereas we're proposing four point five three-foot candles throughout the parking field, which is again customary, uh, to a use like this, especially where there's a change of money, uh, under the canopies associated with the drive-through. In addition to that, there was a comment, uh, in the planner's letter to try to keep the foot candles, uh, at property lines to be zero point two. Uh, and in this situation, we cannot do that given that along the northern property line, uh, there's shared access between the uses and we want to make sure there's adequate light level for, uh, vehicles and pedestrians as well as at the entrance drives at both of main street, uh, and off of, uh, Delsia Drive. As well as on the Matt Black side of the site, uh, the foot candles over there are important given, uh, the inventory parking of, of vehicles there from a, uh, safety perspective. Uh, then what I'll do now is I'll introduce, uh, exhibit E three. Actually, I should ask counsel, this was, uh, submitted as part of the application. Should we mark this as an exhibit?
No, mark it as exhibit A three, just so we keep track. Elevations of, of the Chick-fil-A, proposed Chick-fil-A, right?
Correct. And it's prepared by Roy A. Williams, architect, dated January sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, so the reason I brought this up is to briefly describe the location of signage and so you can get a feel for what this building, uh, looks like. There are a total of four wall signs that are proposed. And so first what I'll do is, uh, show you the elevation two, which is in the center of the page. That's the elevation as if you're standing in the main parking field looking at the new Chick-fil-A building. There's a sign that's proposed directly above the main entrance door. That really tells customers if they've got to their destination, they know where to go into the main entrance of the building. Then flipping to the, to the top, uh, that is the, uh, elevation that's along, uh, the drive-through, uh, lane in the rear of the building. Um, and again, this is a unite, unique site in the sense of the configuration of the roadways and the visibility that you gain from both main street and Delsia Drive. And so, uh, looking, uh, down the view shed quarter, uh, north, you'd be seeing, seeing that Chick-fil-A sign, uh, in the back of the building in that location. Uh, then flipping, uh, to the bottom of the page, on the bottom left-hand corner of the page, that's the view if you're standing on main street and you're looking at, uh, the building from that location. And you'll see that there is a, uh... Sorry, I re- I reversed that, my apologies. The, uh, the, the view that I'm talking about is actually the bottom right-hand corner of the page. That would be if you're standing on main street looking at the back of the building in that location. And then lastly, in the bottom left-hand corner, uh, that's the view if you are standing on, uh, Delsia Drive looking at the building from that location. So all that is to say, uh, there's a total of four wall signs that are proposed, whereas two are allowed by code, uh, given you're only allowed to have two per frontage of the site. So waiver is requested for consideration from the board. Now the signs, uh, that all have Chick-fil-A, uh, text on them are a total of thirty-seven point seven one square feet, which is compliant with code. And the sign, uh, that is on the bottom left-hand corner of this, uh, page, that square sign is thirty-six square feet. Uh, those signs, uh, all the signs are requesting a waiver, uh, as it relates to their maximum sign height, whereas a sign height of four feet is required by code, whereas these signs are proposed to be six feet, uh, at their maximum dimension. So there is a waiver that's required. Uh, lastly, uh, as it relates to the freestanding sign, we'll go back to exhibit A two. And what I'll show you, I'm going to point to it with my pen. So along the northeastern corner of the site at the entrance drive, also off of Delsia, is a proposed, uh, freestanding sign that is twenty-five feet high, which complies with code. And it's a total area of thirty-nine point zero six square feet, which also complies with code. And lastly, as it relates to signage, uh, there is menu boards, or there are rather menu boards that are proposed uh, along the southern side of the page within the canopy that provides access through the drive-through. Um, and there are two of those menu boards proposed because there's two drive-through lanes. And those menu boards are five point nine five feet in height and nine point nine three square feet. That completes my direct testimony.
James, if I, just one or two questions. In addition to the signage that you described, is there a weight finding sign as well? I, I just wanted to indicate to the board that they exist. I know that, that, uh, the board's professionals will review them, just for the location, et cetera. And the other is, is there's a proposed, uh, American flag pole? And that pole will be consistent with the height of permitted in the zone?
That's correct. And that flag pole is located near the outdoor seating area on the southwestern side of the site.
We'll have testimony with respect to the menu board and the, uh, sound department that's really is still. Then, James, also, would you, or if you intend to, if you would, uh, consider with the board that dringing this site?
Sure. Yeah, so like I mentioned, uh, the site's not considered a, a major development pursuant to D E P criteria because it doesn't disturb more than a acre and it doesn't increase impervious coverage by more than a quarter acre of regulated more of your, um, firm surface, uh, or more of your vehicle's surface. And therefore, um, the standard that needs to be met is, is met as it relates to water quality, quantity of recharge. The benefit is that we have reduced impervious coverage as part of the site. So it actually, uh, provides, uh, less stormwater volume, more recharge and better water quality.
And with respect to the use itself, uh, previously the board had been given testimony and proved this drive-through use. But just as a continuation, you testified that there's greater than eight cars stacking per each lane and that there is a bypass lane. And, uh, there, there are two, there are maximum two accesses to Delsia Drive. And that, uh, sorry, yes, to Delsia Drive. The third access that is on Delsia is on a different lot for advanced water.
That's correct.
And finally, that the, uh, you've indicated the drive-through lanes, uh, are separate from the drive aisle. Correct. Now, the board will recall that, uh, when we discussed the main drive aisle originally, uh, we weren't sure where the survey line was. We've now had that survey shared with your, uh, professionals. And that goes to who's maintaining and how it's being maintained. Fortunately, now you have the same family maintaining that roadway. And you have an operate, business operation that will assure the land board will maintain the road, uh, to the standard. The, uh, the other point, there was consideration for, uh, parking. And we have indicated to you that we're requesting the variance for offset parking. Also, the canopies that are there, those are, are, uh, visible through them. It's not the, the walls that's there.
Correct.
Batting cleanup, right?
Yeah.
Talking?
Batting cleanup.
Not the way I play.
Questions?
No.
No.
If there are no questions, James, that's, uh... Oh, James, if we walk away, sorry. Since you're proud to be an expert, would you give your opinion as to the, uh... And I know we have a planner who will testify, but your opinion is the benefit over the burden and, uh, if there's any negative consequence of the variances that were requested. Fortunately, we have a planner.
We do. And the planner, no doubt, will spend some time on it. But the engineer did a very workman-like job just talking about the site and why these things make sense. So, so thank you.
Mr. Horner was recognized by the board as a truck expert and... Hi, good evening. Kent Dave Horner, Horner and Kansas City. Are from Prepare the Traffic Impact Study for this application dated December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two submitted with the application. So you heard a lot of testimony, uh, about the site operations, but I, I won't repeat that. Um, you've been here, testimony got the access. Uh, so just to make sure everybody's clear on what we evaluated in the, in the traffic study. So the, even though there's two driveways for this lot, the one is where the vehicle inventory is dropped with the Matt Black. Uh, so it's the, the one access driveway that's to be used by the Chick-fil-A out onto Delsia Drive. And there's one access driveway out onto main street. Um, both of those driveways, even though they're remaining essentially where they are currently located and they currently function as a full movement access in both directions, um, they both are being improved. The one on main street, as you heard testimony, has been reduced and more controlled from a sixty-foot wide driveway to a more manageable, I believe it's twenty-four foot wide, um, a much more defined access. Uh, and the Delsia Drive access isn't changing much in terms of its configuration. Um, but both driveways are subject to the outside agency approvals, N J D O T in the case of Delsia Drive and the county in case of main street. Uh, so we do require those approvals. Uh, based on my traffic impact study, what we're looking at in particular was could those accesses handle the traffic of this application? Um, and the answer is yes, it does. Uh, we did an analysis of the driveways. Uh, it, it will operate at acceptable level of service, uh, acceptable in terms of, of what D O T and the county would require. So we don't anticipate any issues. Um, to answer a couple of questions that, that were in the engineer's letter. One is, I know there was some question as to whether the access driveway to Delsia Drive, would it benefit from having a second egress lane? In other words, it's designed for one ingress and one egress. That was one of the questions raised in the Sicles, uh, letter. Uh, the answer is in terms of capacity, it does not need a second egress. And sometimes that can actually confuse the situation in terms of side-by-side drivers making different movements. However, it's subject to N J D O T. And if N J D O T thinks that would be a benefit, there is room to accomplish that on the site and we would of course do what N J D O T requires. I know one of the other questions was, did we assume in our numbers the reoccupancy of the save-a-lot? The answer is we did. Um, when we did our traffic data, the save-a-lot was not, was not occupied. But we did assume its reoccupancy and we actually overestimated it a bit because we assumed it would be a similar grocery store as to what the save-a-lot was. So those are in the numbers. We wanted to make sure the, the combined joint access would accommodate both, uh, this development and lot two point oh three. So it does. Uh, so with that, I, unless there's questions, I think that's all that needs to be said about the traffic study.
Any questions?
You have a question. Um, I'm new, so the first time through, you may have answered these questions. I guess with main street and, and Delsia Drive, Chick-fil-A is obviously successful. One of the things with success is cars is, you guys say stacking, so I'll use that terminology. How, what do you think in your proposed study, being in the college? I know it used to be a medical facility or doctor's office across. You have a residential piece, you have a college, university, and Delsia Drive. So Monarch Diner, things like Delsia Drive, I'm going off of those experiences where cars are stacked there. With the traffic coming into a new Chick-fil-A, it's going to be popular, I'm pretty sure, especially with main street. Do you anticipate if the cars are coming in, you have a drive-through, I guess, at the southern piece on main street, right?
You're talking about...
Yeah, so you come in there, you have one-way, thirty-two stacked driveway lanes. If I'm coming on main street, coming from this building here, people trying to get in, are we now saying we're kind of held to the people having some type of courtesy? Because I see myself as a car coming in, I'm coming down main street, want to make a right in the Chick-fil-A, a pretty much, a pretty tight turn to get into the drive-through lanes. We have traffic come from Delsia Drive to get in the drive-through lanes. Did you guys anticipate now main street being backed up? It's only a two-lane road in each direction. I, I envisioned, I've just seen it from experience, Chick-fil-A at the Lowe's, Chick-fil-A in Defford, Dunkin' Donuts on Delsia Drive. A, a four-lane highway on Delsia Drive that has a pretty good forty, maybe forty-five, I'm not sure. Hopefully I don't exceed it, but I'm thinking it's forty-five in that, in that section. Do you essentially now turn, you know, Delsia Drive into maybe a two-lane road? People coming from the north, from McDonald's to try to make a right, that's probably going to be popular. People passing Monarch Diner to make a left. You're essentially now, Monarch Diner turned me into a one, a one-lane road each way, especially with main street, car stacking. Where des, you know, residents trying to make a left to go to shop right maybe. What, what was the situation with that and how you guys?
Trying to put your mind at ease. First of all, it can be a little deceptive in terms of the scale of the drawing makes it look like perhaps everything's more compressed than it is in actuality. But in terms of main street, so keep in mind for that right turn movement, first of all, it's a free-flow movement. There's no, there's no need for a vehicle to stop or yield right of way when they are entering the driveway. And it's, it, it's going to be designed to have a proper radius, so there'll be no issue with the car being able to slow down and make that right turn safely. When they get into the site, uh, one reason why Chick-fil-A is providing basically sixteen car stacking in each lane, thirty-two car stacking in excess of the ordinance requirement is just for the reason that we don't want to see stacking of drive-through vehicles going into this main access aisle. And we don't anticipate that will happen with the thirty-two car stacking. And as you're familiar with Chick-fil-A, they do a very good job of having their, uh, employees come out and facilitate that, that ordering and, and payment process at the, at the drive-through. Um, again, as you enter into that aisle, i- it's also a free-flow right turn into that drive-through area and to the parking lot here. Um, and the rules of the road apply. If someone is, is intending to make a left, they will yield to the driver making a right. Uh, that's how, how the courtesy goes. So it's not even a matter of, of asking someone to do something out of the ordinary. It's just, you, someone come make that right turn, the left turn yields. And there's obviously a lot more internal stacking for those left turns than there, uh, than there is for the right. So that's good that they're the ones yielding to the right. Uh, in terms of Delsia Drive, again, um, it's a four-lane road, so two lanes in each direction. So cars can make the right turn in, they don't have to stop, they'll slow down to make the right. But if someone's slowing down and there's a, a through vehicle, they can certainly either wait a couple of seconds while that vehicle makes the turn or... or they can use the other lane. It's not, there's not going to be a congested stop condition where all the, the through traffic on Delsey Drive keeps it fluid because you've got cars turning in and out. So, hopefully, that answers your question. And rest assured, NJDOT and the county both do a very careful job and review of what we're going to be providing them for the access designs. And if there's any improvements that they require, whether it be increased radius, signage, striping, whatever it is, increased lanes, in terms of the driveway itself, that will be provided.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So, looking at that from the design, so I'm coming off of Main Street, making a right. I see some landscaping there. So, I'm gonna be required to go past that landscaping, basically that tree, make a right turn, then make another radius to line up to get into the, the two, the two drive-through lanes.
Correct.
If you're not blocked from somebody making...
If you're not blocked from somebody. I mean, I understand when you say eight's required and thirty-two's there. To me, thirty-two's not a lot. Again, I'm just going on based on experience, just seeing other Chick-fil-A's, and I'm sure they use the kinda same design and same studies and everything like that. That just doesn't seem like a good amount of space. I know courtesy the road, but courtesy the road is just something written on paper. I'm, I'm still relying on those people coming in to be courteous.
Well, to your point, so, for example, he talked about a nearby Chick-fil-A. He called it the Lowe's Chick-fil-A, but it's a...
Mantle with it, yeah, mantle.
Right, on five fifty-three Woodbury-Glasboro Road. Are you familiar with it at all?
Uh, I, I know where it is. I'm not intimately familiar with its layout.
I just had to ask because my question was gonna be the obvious one, which is, what's their stacking ability? What's the number there?
You took my, took my question.
Now, I wouldn't expect you to know that, you're a traffic engineer. But I guess that's an open question for your, one of your colleagues, the fellow who's...
My, my one main concern, okay, is, and we know it's gonna happen. They're gonna try and make a left out on Delsey Drive.
Yep. Yep.
And then if you have somebody coming in the right lane to turn in, the guy behind him's gonna pop over and cut off. Okay? Trying to make a left out on Delsey Drive is like trying to play Frogger.
Especially cer- certain times of the day, you're not moving for...
With the cross street.
Yeah. That...
So, and if you have cars that are lined up to make a left, you're gonna have a traffic jam, and everybody's trying to get out to go to the right.
Yep.
If you have them one lane only.
One of, one of the, I, I'm sorry, the, the tanks. One of the aspects of, of this project that is different than the others that you're looking at is that that is, that accessway is a driveway on the Chick-fil-A lot. And, and the result of that would, it's as if it were a drive-out on the lot. And the result of that, it, it gives additional stacking, it gives additional movement onsite. Whereas otherwise, you're out on the roadway. I, I think that it's unique to this design that we don't have in some of the examples that we use. We can't, we, we know somebody's gonna do the, the...
Oh, yeah, it's gonna happen.
Beyond what we tried to design for that stacking of thirty-two. But also, if there is a backup in the stacking line, even after thirty-two, they're backing up onsite. And that drive, this main drive aisle, this main accessway is part of the...
Well, that, that's, that's true for Delsey Drive, but what you just explained, that wouldn't be true for Main Street. So, if I'm coming on Main Street, past the Heritage Match Black, 'cause on my right, and you have a stacking issue in the main drive that you're talking off of Delsey Drive, that's gotta create a stacking issue on Main Street, which is a two-lane highway, which nobody can, can't go around. You try, of course, the natural thing you're gonna try to do is go around them. Doesn't, there is, to me, unless, I go there all the time, that street. I don't even think there's enough shoulder for me to even maybe try to say, well, I could scooch over a little bit to give somebody a little bit of leeway.
When, when you look at the other Chick-fil-A's, they have a, a road when they, they've got the two drive. But as you approach the shopping area, you have a third, a lane just for people making the right-hand turn. You're not stopping up all the traffic behind you. If that wasn't there, there'd be one big mess on that street, 'cause the cars would be going nowhere. As it is for us, I've been on that road plenty of times when the college classes are ending. Okay, especially when people are going home, four o'clock, five o'clock. I can be parked at Matt Blatt, and the people up at the light at High Street and are going nowhere. I'm just sitting there. I might be able to move one car length on really bad time, when the college is going around and the kids are moving their cars around and pulling out of the driveway.
And get the school buses from...
The school buses have used that lot to go, to cut across. I, um, you know, when I go out, if I'm on that road, if I'm, if I'm facing Delsey Drive, is there a sign that says I cannot make a left turn?
No, it's, those movements are permitted.
Then, then the traffic will be backed up from here to Kingdom Come. It just won't, it, the people will be trying to make a left-hand turn, and they're gonna have to cross two lanes to do it. And those people aren't gonna stop because they wanna get home. The, or on a Friday, they're heading to the shore, and that line is even longer. So, I have some doubts about your, not about what happens so much inside, but getting in and out.
And not to mention, you're gonna be opening up the new, the old save-a-lot to Lishia's. So, did you account for all that traffic coming and going, trying to maneuver through the center aisle?
Yeah.
We get, we get to count for that. And with regard to the concern about the turning movements on Delsey Drive, this has to go before NJDOT. It's currently in all movement driving and always has been. It was permitted originally that way. Granted, the Chick-fil-A wasn't there, it was Bowling Alley and the Save-a-Lot, you know. Certainly, in the DOT application process, if that's a concern, that's something that DOT, they, they could restrict that movement or sign it for no movement during peak hours, for example. And of course, we'd be amenable to whatever DOT requires. There are alternatives to get back that direction, making a right out Main Street and going down to the signal line up. So, there are, the, the beauty of this site is there is the access to both roadways. It allows for circulation.
That third driveway to the left is in, right here.
Yeah. True, yeah, that's also...
But didn't you say that was advanced auto parking lot?
Have you ever been there and tried to nudge out, you know, lose the...
Circulation's...
Yeah.
Because it's all blocked.
The side line is...
You talk about the side line being horrible? Side line is horrible.
The side line is...
When the college is letting out, you can't get into the line to get on that road. I mean, you have to wait, one car goes, you sit there for the next light, one car goes, you sit there for the next light. Been there, done that.
Stacked up here?
I mean, well, they're stacked up on that section behind it, behind the, that would run parallel to the, to the graveyard. And it takes forever to get up there, then they're gonna be able to make the right. But there are only a couple cars.
Dalton Drive gets backed up the same amount of time, the heavy flow between four to six...
Yeah, we understand the during peak periods, those three two have to just, now, we understand.
No red light cameras anymore, so we gotta, you know, because that was, no, you laugh, but that was a salutary, uh, uh, effect with that Dalton Drive. I, I, because that was one of the biggest violations in sites. Because i- in essence, that, that stretch does have a lot of, describe it as road rash for, for lack of a better term.
This may go slightly out of, uh, of order.
Sure.
Eric has indicated to you his experience and would talk to operations, but he would like him to speak to this particular...
Yeah, so quickly, I heard some of your questions and some of your issues with the site. I just wanna add that the Woodbury, Woodbury Road, is that the Sewell, the Sewell?
Woodbury-Glasboro Road, five fifty-three, sure.
So, quickly, my, my quick study of that site prior to this meeting is that that is an existing store that has two lanes at the order point and then merges to one for the meal delivery. So, I wanna point out something that may have not been said already, but James, but this, the thirty-two cars of stacking we have is two lanes running consistently at all times. If you don't merge at any point, lane two gets their meal delivered the same as lane one. So, this type of stacking, this, this type of operations is similar to new stores we have in Vineland, new stores we have in Cherry Hill, Vineland just over. So, and the stacking numbers are very similar. This is a standard that Chick-fil-A requires all of our new stores to hit. They have the minimums and they have the maximums. Well, they might like more because a busy drive-through means a business is good. It also means that a busy drive-through that's not functioning is lost path to traffic, it's bad for business. They know that township that's not happy with the way that things are going, they can't propose a site like that. They understand the issues that will come about. But the important thing to note is that comparing it strictly to just Sewell, Sewell, I'm probably mispronouncing it, the two-to-one merge is something that is very difficult for Chick-fil-A's stomach nowadays. And a lot of those stores are all being remodeled. There's one being remodeled right next to my work that we're working on, thankfully. We get the chance to redesign it ourselves. But that type of turnaround of person sitting in the drive-through is not prototypical of the new stores.
Well, what's the stacking ensure?
Sewell, I, it's two-to-one. From, from the area, from the area I counted, eighteen.
Yeah.
Before it gets backed up into parking, that's...
All right. So, you're gonna have two cars being served at the same time, leaving at the same time sometimes. What if the one on the outside lane wants to go to the left and the one on the inside lane wants to go to the right? You don't see a top, you don't see a traffic problem?
The other places have traffic lights at that, at Woodbury-Fil-A is.
The, the drive-through is, is completely staffed by the team members, person to person. They are also facilitating traffic at that same time. They're protective vests, so everything's seen. And this is an operation that has been successfully implemented in other locations. It's insisted within new stores.
When you compare, when you say other locations...
Your concern is the outside lane will wanna turn left onto the...
You got the outside lane might wanna turn left, and then, and the inside lane might wanna go right.
Accidents waiting to happen.
There is sufficient distance at that point for one to go either way. I, I don't, I don't think that the, the discussion point is the circulation pattern or the stacking, at least this is how I'm hearing it. It's not the circulation point or the stacking onsite. The concern is when we get to the drive and the intersection, the Delsey Drive and the intersection at Main Street. And in, in these circumstances, we under, we understand that it doesn't matter if we only had one car that came onto this side. When they get to that intersection, the Delsey Drive at peak hour, and they wanna make that left-hand turn, maybe the DOT, if that was, that's gonna stop. But if they wanna make that left-hand turn, it does, it doesn't matter that it's Chick-fil-A. It could be just one vehicle. So, we recognize the circumstance that occurs on Delsey Drive. It, it is not something that the nature of the business will have a, a corrective nature or a negative impact. It's, it's where we are.
Well, it's gonna be much busier than what, what, you know, I mean, you know, the...
But we, but we have multiple, at this site, unlike other sites, we have, uh, I think, three or four access points. So, it, it's not that we're coming into that one driveway or the concern is the one location.
But a lot of the others have a traffic light that regulates the, the people being able to turn right, turn left, stop, go straight. If there was a traffic light there, you wouldn't have the problem. But if, and, and the places that have the traffic light are, you know, tuned in, they get, the light turns green, they turn, they turn. The light turns red, they stop, you know, but that's not something you have to help you on this road.
Of the traffic counts that would permit a right and a draw. Well, no, but there, no, there, there certainly wouldn't be enough traffic to warrant a traffic light at this location. But again, in terms of the operation of that driveway, it's NJDOT's jurisdiction. We have to get a permit from them. We have not acquired a permit from them as yet. So, they may restrict that left-turn movement if they deem it to be desirable. They may restrict it for just peak hours. They may ask us to have two exit lanes, as was suggested by the, or the question was asked by, by your engineer. We're subject to that, and DOT understands the situation on Delsey Drive. So, they're not, they're not gonna say, oh, it's Chick-fil-A, we'll, we'll let them go, we'll be easy on them. That's not the case. They're going to make sure this driveway is as safe as possible. A final comment, if I may. We suffer under the circumstance that this is a private driveway that is used as a public bypass. And under the norm, this driveway would only be out of traffic. It is excessively more than that. I, I, I've done it over the years as well. And so, at some point, I know I had a very brief conversation as to whether the municipality would wanna take the roadway. It was extremely brief, and it was clear that we were gonna keep this as a private driveway. And so, we suffer the impact of public use, and we're, we're amenable to doing that. We're willing to maintain it, we're willing to have public come across. But a lot of, I'm not suggesting all, a lot of the negative impact is that we're cut.
Does traffic quieting introduced on that cut-through make sense? Because if somebody's gonna go there for a chicken sandwich or to do some other business, they're, they're not in a hurry. You know, they're, they're, they're where they wanna be. Where somebody's cutting through is somebody who's, you know, likely to...
Yeah, I mean, there certainly could be consideration. I think the locations that make sense would be right opposite where the, uh, the median is shown here for a possible speed table, speed hump, not, not a speed problem.
Just don't bring back the bottles.
Not as a bottle that should used to be done where you have to practically stop and you still bottom out. I'm talking about a speed hump that just kinda maintains that as, as, let's say, fifteen miles an hour, and no one can speed through there. It just kind of, it also may, uh, make some people feel like, oh, it's not worth it anymore. They gotta slow down through there, and they, and they don't cut through. That certainly can be considered. It's a straight shot, so there's nothing that would say to me, you can't do that. It would be a safe location to, to provide some...
I have, I have a question, counselor, if I may, or, or the gentleman. Across the road where you have Big Lots, the old Big Lots, McDonald's was there. I've argued this for a long time. I always felt there should be a traffic light there because it's, it's too much of a run from the diner to Dalton Drive. That's why there's so many accidents. They speed, and of course, when the kids are back in session, they speed unbelievably down, down forty-seven. I'm wondering, and you guys could do it better than me, if there was a traffic light there, would that help at all?
No.
The state of New Jersey, through the Department of Transportation...
Yeah, right.
Has, has, uh, I, I won't say they have said to me, but they have said to me, this is our road.
We're gonna do it along.
And we'll tell you what you can do on our road.
That answers it, that, okay.
If you put a traffic light there, it's gonna be worse.
We don't believe that we have the traffic counts that would warrant, traffic warrants that would allow that.
Right.
So, and there are a couple of traffic lights not too far away, I think just past the, the Matt Blatt. But Dave, might correct it, there just aren't the warrants to do that?
Yeah, there, there's really two things working against that. The warrants is number one, there are certain thresholds you have to have on the side street. And you can't add up the side street of one way and the side street opposite together. Whatever one that has the higher volume, that's what you use, and it just wouldn't meet the threshold, number one.
Okay.
But number two, they also have stringent spacing standards. And I'm not sure the distance is here, but the spacing requirement may be half mile between the lines on this type of roadway, and it just isn't there.
So, I got another question. So, I know you guys highlighted parking, you seem to be very happy with the parking spaces. So, how, how's the design set up for, parking spaces, to me, that's great on paper, but everybody's mobile app and everybody's taken out. What's the setup for somebody's, a mobile app for the DoorDash's of the world or the Uber Eats of the world? Is there a staging area for them? How's that, how does that traffic come in and play, play the role in that, in that piece of the pot? Again, parking, parking is great, and you have an excess parking. Well, people aren't eating in fast food. I'm not a fast food expert, but people aren't eating inside anymore. People are grabbing and going. What's the, what's the staging situation?
Eric is much more experienced than I, and he's the next one to testify. I just wanna make sure that everyone is comfortable with the fact that we're, we're trying to serve the public by allowing this to be open to the public. And we, we don't, we shouldn't have to suffer because we're trying to do that. If there was a way that we could accomplish those left-hand turns out with a traffic light, or we'd be happy to, because it's good for our customers as well. It's just, it's a very difficult...
Okay. On a lighter note, okay, you no longer have to be able to take your little boats and get across the lot, because every time it rained, that lot used to have a sinkhole, and everybody bring their kids and their...
Since the Greenblatt family acquired the property, they have...
They, yeah, yeah. But for years, it was, it was like that.
All right, so what you're saying is, the majority of our concerns are gonna be addressed by the...
And the county.
And the county. Because making that left out on Delsey Drive is gonna be a nightmare. Because making that left out on Delsey Drive is gonna be a nightmare.
You're gonna spill your shirt.
Concern and we hear it in your professional letter?
Cause I, I, I agree with the professional to have that second lane. If they're gonna allow a left turn on the Delsey Drive, there needs to be a second lane to make the right out.
Understood and we'll make sure that those concerns are shared with NJ DOT in the process. Uh, and we will follow their need in terms of what they will have us do to improve it.
Okay.
Eric, if you would, um, you've indicated to the board your relationship with, with Chick-fil-A. If you'd like to make some comments and then I'll.
Yeah, oh, sure. Um, my name is again Eric Lockey. Um, I've been for the past four years a, uh, development design consultant for Chick-fil-A. Um, and I've worked on a various, uh, new stores and remodels across the PA New Jersey region, about twenty stores in the last four years. Um, I will be very brief with, I think, we've touched on almost everything that was part of my test, testimony today. Um, and open it up for a chance to get, again, some questions. But, starting at the building, again, we talked about fifty-four hundred square foot building. Approximately forty percent of that is dedicated to kitchen and food prep. The reason that is, because today's business is sixty percent drive-through and third-party and forty percent dining. So, the emphasis of this new store and this new model is to get food out as quickly as possible. So, again, as we re- briefly touched on previously, is that we have three lanes of drive-through, sorry, two lanes of drive-through and a third lane of bypass. That third lane of bypass will not be used in case of only an emergency. Okay, an emergency I'm talking about is someone's car's break, car breaks down, you can get out, or you have a screaming child in the backseat. You gotta get out and get away. So, that bypass lane, um, there will be no menu board that's installed as part of that, there will be two menu boards. Again, these lanes do not merge, your food is ordered out of the second lane, you are delivered through the second lane. And it's delivered now, no longer through a window, right? Cause that wouldn't make sense that someone's gonna reach out to the second lane. We now have sliding doors on it, just like going to a local grocery store or walking to the seven, seven line. So, this is all facilitated during off-hours, uh, peak, sorry, I'll say peak hours typically from eleven AM to two PM. And during the dinner hours, five to seven, um, obviously Monday through Saturday, with the peak hours being Saturday afternoon typically. Um, so during the hours that I just described, the eleven to two and five to seven, that's areas would be facilitated, facilitated by team members. The menu boards will be off, they'll have the underneath canopy, the first canopy you see, you'll have members with their iPads taking your orders. Uh, and then you'll also have members spaced out in between the two canopies, uh, facilitating payment. Um, you may have seen this at your existing stores around here, um, some of them have cash payment booths, they look like little phone booths and someone hands you a receipt and you're on your way. Typical, uh, employee shift, twenty-five team members. And, so the, the base, base canopy. Why we need it, why it's an improvement for the team members, is it's a heated, fanned, all-weather, uh, canopy. It protects them from the heat, protects them from the rain. Uh, then also, the, uh, trash enclosure, I know we talked about it being in the front yard. This location is optimal for this site, the trash can be wheeled and then used across in the drive-through lanes through the bypass into trash enclosure. Trash enclosure also has a ramp, uh, enclosed roofed storage shed, uh, attached to it which the operator may keep their winter salt, their snow shovels. Um, anything they may need seasonally tucked in out of the way. Deliveries, I know recently we talked about the truck that'll be used, it'll be a W, WB fifty. Uh, that occurs approximately five to six times a week. It happens off-hours, it happens every night, there's key drop system. Uh, each truck, uh, usually services anywhere from four to six restaurants, uh, during their shift. So they drop to the site, they shut their vehicle off, it's all run off a battery at that point, so it's quiet. Uh, and they service through the, through the service door and they leave. So, uh, during that period, again, that happens almost every night. And, the last one being the, uh, trash pickup, that happens four or five times per week, could happen more, could happen less, that's typically up to the local operator. And that will happen during off-hours or usually, more than likely, it's the early morning hours. Again, the store is usually open from six AM to ten PM on a regular Saturday. So that, that trash pickup can't happen day-to-day, especially if it's needed. Uh, but that is typically up to the local, uh, operator and private owner. I think everything else you see usually handled in the engineering presentation, so.
I didn't have any questions. I just got one or two questions. First, the, is there a speaker system at the menu?
Yes, the, uh, fancy term for it, worth it, uh, is the automatic volume control, uh, technology. But what this is simply is, is it reads the surrounding, it has its own microphone built into it simply to adjust the audio. Uh, so it is a, uh, a manageable, uh, system, uh, by the, by the bill, by the operator himself. Uh, but also it does it, you know, throughout the day, you know, un, uncontrolled.
And the eighty-nine parking space is anticipated, is that more than that?
Yes.
Very consistent. There's a question that was asked about a mobile app. If I send in my order ahead of time, how do I get it?
Okay, so, um, I'm a, I'm gonna use your Chick-fil-A app. Uh, unfortunately for me, they have one less than five minutes from my office. So, um, I wanna beat the lunch rush, I'm gonna know I'm gonna use the mobile app. Not enough people do, they choose to sit in the drive-thru, that's their choice. But, um, the mobile app's great, you can either choose to have it delivered to my car or I can go and walk in and pick it up. My local Chick-fil-A does not have dedicated spaces, other Chick-fil-A's do. It's an operator-specific choice. Where they place them onsite, I can only speak from experience of other Chick-fil-A's. Typically, they will not be using primary parking in front of the store, and that's where our ADA parking is. More than likely, they will not be using the front. Twelve spaces to the store. Um, it is operator-specific with this site, um, they could have, likely, like as we're saying, we have exclusive parking across the access, we have parking onsite. I don't have any specifics of where they will park it because it is again, the operator's choice, um, but.
An employee delivers it to the car.
There are options that do not apply to both stores. My store does employ.
Forgive me, but when you say operator's choice, are these franchises?
Yes, yeah, they, they choose specific operators for each location, correct.
Okay, so kind of McDonald's situation.
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't making the comparison, just the paradigm.
I, I don't know if that.
I mean, it, it did, so it's his choice, if I'm understanding, he can make a dedicated mobile app site or whatever, they, they deliver it too. So that makes it more a concern to me with the pileup, the stacking of cars, especially on the, the main street side. Because traditionally, when you got the mobile app, I know, I believe, sorry, engineer, whatever, sorry if I got your profession wrong. I know you said the dedicated sidewalks or whatever, but we all know, nobody's gonna really use those dedicated sidewalks. Those, those, the one, the parking spaces in asphalt cover, people are just gonna cut across. The employee that's bringing my bag out, they're gonna cut across unless there's some rule that, that operator makes that you have to walk on the sidewalk. For workers' comp and safety, even with a safety vest, you know they're gonna cut through that centerpiece, out the front doors, try to find the cars. If there's not a dedicated lot, it's gonna be, you know, chaos, not even organized chaos. That makes my concern even more. It's just gonna be, it's gonna be a situation that's, it's chaotic, it's chaotic to me. It's not gonna be controlled, the mobile app people, well, I'm, you're in the front, I know you just, you tell your car color and where you're at. I don't know if they got space numbers, but you're gonna have people walking around, where's, where's, where's Dave's Ford F-three fifty? Can I see it, where's it at, where are you at? To me, that, that enhances my thoughts with the main, especially with the main street side.
This is, we are requesting parking barriers because we want to park some of our, uh, spaces offset. As a result of that, the board has the right to say, as a condition of that barriers. This is what I want to implement with respect to the mobile app pickup. And, and I, and I take your point that you're concerned about the safety of it. And I, I mean, I would, I would hope and it would be extremely difficult for us if the parking spaces immediately in the front of the building were used.
Of course.
But I don't think that's your intent. And, and so, within that context, there is the ability to say, a minimum of, but let me ask you, how, how long does it take? Between the time that you get there and, and the person comes out and delivers it?
Well, you, the, how the app works, and, and just speaking from experience is that you, you're supposed to signal when you get to the store. And then you may have to wait some period of time. I cheat, I know what my driving time is to get to the store and time it up pretty well.
Um, if, if, if I'm the, the worst customer and I don't call it in until I get there, is it three minutes, is it a minute?
I'd say seven to eight minutes is usually the turnaround time of an order that's placed.
So, that, is that from the time I place it?
I treat it the same sense, so, the, correct, if you were to order at the store, it'd be seven to eight minutes. If you tell them, the leak is, I believe that's the purpose of the app is to say, yeah, I'm at the store, I'm ready to take the food, that means they need it.
So it's the preparation time, but if, if, if I, is I think your concern is, if I call ahead. That delivery time is only a minute or two because it's all been prepared. So the turnover of that one space is, is multiple. And, the board may choose that certain few spaces have to be of the onsite ones and the balance can be across.
Well, it's not, my concern is not the time, it's the practicality of it. So if you go to Chick-fil-A, I use the mobile app all the time. They don't know where your car is, there's not a dedicated lot with, to me, as a business owner, would think, well, David used the mobile app, he's gotta be in parking lot A. That's the mobile pickup app. But David could be at the front of the store, Jane could be over here. And this person's looking around for the, and it's, it's, people are not gonna use a si- the workers are not gonna use a sidewalk and say, well, I gotta walk around here. They're gonna cut through the lane and cut through the stacking and that's what it's gonna be. And with the canopy in the front, you talked about seven and the eight minutes to get, get, um, served. Traditionally, right, you have your order taker by the, by the menu. As an operations specialist at Chick-fil-A, from the time that person greets me till they say, my pleasure, when I pull off, what's the time that, that average people take to order and pay?
Seven to eight minutes of the use.
Seven to eight minutes to order and pay?
So, sorry, to pay.
To order, to, to the time they greet me, I tell them my order, I give them my payment, debit card, uh, this is most like, what's that timeframe? Yeah, from an operations standpoint, do you look at it like that, how long does it take for you to take an order?
Yeah, to take one, to take a order, to receive an order, to execute the drive-through.
Correct.
Is seven to eight minutes.
Nah, okay, no, from the time I say, not get the food, that's seven to eight minutes.
Oh, sorry.
The average person to, to take an order, because if I'm, if I'm at the front of that stacking line, that thirty-two, the thirty, thirty-two, I'm in the front, right? Your canopy's in the front.
Yes.
How long does it usually take? Because that, to me, again, obviously, it's, it's a blow-up, it's visual, gotta make this turn. You could have stack-ups by the person, cause the person trying to give their order, they're looking at the menu, they're making all these choices, like the menu changes every day. What's usually that time between the greet and the payment?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't, I know what you're asking for, I just don't have an answer.
Okay.
So the, the stacking, where the canopy is located behind the order point.
Right.
Right.
Got you.
Okay.
Thanks.
As I, I started, I mean, to seek justice, you have the ability to condition and approve it. And if you determine that a certain number of spaces on, on the site have to be reserved for the pickup. Then, we know the direction that the worker's gonna take and we know that, that, uh, it's, it'll be safe.
I do actually have a question on parking. Um, is this going to have, like the one in Sewell or Main Street, are they gonna have dedicated delivery drivers?
At Chick-fil-A.
At this Chick-fil-A, yeah, their own cars, their own fleet.
That is, that is, that is a, a five percent that is included in the, in that sixty percent. Uh, this is only because after doing enough of them, some of them have asked for van dedicated parking, right? They know, the, the operator knows his store, he knows he's gonna have it, this has not been requested for that site. So, it, it very well could happen, I don't have the answer to that at all.
But that's part, part of the concern is having the vans or cars and the mobile ordering, cause they have that one, two manchur, they have dedicated spots for mobile ordering that you pull up and go to. They have the delivery drivers and they also have the two lanes where the one filters all the way around the building and the one filters out to the back open spot that they have. Um, just along with the traffic filtering in from both the streets and the parking, um, just counting, you know, just all parking these, uh, was it? Six and seven, uh, two sixes that are right in front of the store by the four handicap spots. Those two blocks of parking right there between the two trees right off to the left side of the Chick-fil-A. Not, yeah, those, uh, right in the middle, where the four tree plots are right there, those two spots, I'm counting that right there getting filled up real fast. Um, and even the sharing spaces that you're proposing at that level.
Driving, to the gentleman's point, driving past that, that, um, Manchur, um, Chick-fil-A. I, I gotta tell you, I, I'll be honest, I, I'm not a Chick-fil-A guy, but I go by there all the time, cause I live right near there. And they've got at least ten or twelve vehicles, I think, that are just dedicated for delivery vehicles. That are parked kind of along the front. I guess, with some of your parking challenges, you, don't you have to know for the board's benefit or can, or you're looking for the board to just say, okay, well. Operator hasn't asked you for any delivery vehicles, therefore, no Chick-fil-A delivery vehicles will be on this site, period, the end.
Or, or Mr. Alice.
Sounds a little harsh, so that's why.
Or Mr. Alice, as a part of that off-site variance, you can tell us that those vehicles have to park in those spaces and that they are to be labeled.
Well, I mean, it would seem to me at a minimum, be- because that, but the, the board's decision, obviously, I just, you know, just spinning off of that point.
I concede the fact that there, there can be conditions that can respond to the concerns of several board members by, by tagging certain spaces.
Okay. So then maybe, when we get to the engineer, the board engineer, he'll factor that in or, or, or talk about that, uh, as far as where those, those potential delivery vehicles might best wind up, so to speak. Thank you.
There are no other questions, I think that's our presentation. Okay, except for the fact I have a planner, you aren't meant all to.
Show love.
But you, we've been acknowledged as an expert and if you, what would you report as testimony that occurred and the impact?
I will. Um, it, it's fun as a planner running through my mind as the hearing's going on. Um, all of the planning testimony relates to the history of this municipality, the Seaford District. Uh, a dead bowling alley and all of the policies you put in place for revitalization to occur. And oops, this one may be too successful. It's kind of an, an interesting twist on things. Um, so I'm going back in the planning testimony to, cause new stuff is good as, as an underlying theme. Um, to consolidate the evening short, um, as, as counsel identified, Mr. Thon was very specific in identifying all of the variances and waivers. Where they occurred onsite and how they relate to the design. So I'm gonna adopt his testimony as a given by me and I'm gonna link that to policy, uh, which is the planner's job. Uh, and not spend the same amount of time that he just did, um, explaining them to you. Um, the primary physical, uh, variants that we have are the canopy encroachments, um, on both, uh, on both Delsey and on Main Street. I'm gonna do it this way. Um, you don't see them clearly on A two, but there's one canopy here, um, at the food delivery point and one canopy on this side where the orders are taken. Although order taking is flexible, um, throughout the line, so if they need more stacking, they can take the orders for you down. But as was described, the canopies are essentially, um, the outdoor working incinerator. Uh, this is unlike other fast foods where you're talking to the menu board and having your food passed out through a window. Uh, these are man establishments and it's good that I heard all of you talk about other places, you've seen how this works. Uh, which creates a situation where you wanna create a safe, relatively climate-controlled outdoor area, uh, for the staff to work in. Um, the setback in this area is fifty feet, we're twenty-one point nine to Delsey and two point nine to Main. Um, but a- as you heard, the design of them architecturally, thin poles, a thin top, uh, so that they're not visually, uh, intrusive to what you would see coming down the road. Yeah, let me go to exhibit A three. So you can see it's a relatively thin canopy structure, showing the architecture on either side. Um, so while they do go into the setback, they are not like a building, uh, because of the openness of them. Um, and they serve a very important function for the use. Um, the other is impervious, uh, as a physical, uh. The other is impervious, uh, as a physical, uh, issue for the site. Twenty percent is, is permitted, it's, it's now ninety, twenty-four percent. Um, so obviously, we're going in the right direction, coming down to seventy-eight-ish. It's obviously improvement over the old bowling alley with everything paved, um, and even the interim stage, where some of the site plan, or some of the site improvements had been already made, uh, for the auto dealership, uh, we're still moving in a positive direction. Uh, the parking buffer and setback, um, where fifteen feet is required on, on the setback, twenty-five feet for an aisle drive. Obviously, we're coming much closer to the edges of the site, and go back to the area. What's significant here is that we're not talking about the rear of, of the commercial on either side with residential behind it. We're talking about these areas along the busy highway, with commercial on both sides of the hi- of the highway on the other side. So, this is not an area where these setback intrusions are getting closer to a lesser intense use, to somebody's living room or bedroom. Um, this is in the middle of a, a triangular shaped, uh, roadway area, um, in, in a regular shape to it, a busy area. Um, it's because we're getting a little closer to the street, um, we're, we're not impacting anybody in a negative way. And as you know, going up and down the corridor, um, this fifteen and twenty-five feet is, is observed in the breach, rather than in reality. Um, I think there was only one use I saw going up and down at it. Um, and I hate to say, you know, keep going with something that, that is inconsistent with your ordinance, but for this site, fitting it into this triangular shape, I think it works reasonably well. Um, you've heard a lot of testimony about parking, um, it is odd in a commercial use to have your parking off-track. Um, but this is a continuation of the odd lot pattern, single usage, and trying to figure out how to fit uses into this puzzle. So, you had the auto dealership extending into this lot for the parking area, this use now extending into this lot for additional parking. It's basically continuing a rational use of the triangle despite the existing lot sizes or lot shapes. Uh, those lot shapes continue to have financial reasons for them to continue, and not simply reshape all of the lots to fit the uses. Um, so while it's an, an atypical variance in my experience, I think because of the unique situation here, it works. Quantity of parking has been addressed. Um, no loading space, um, for all the fast food restaurants I've worked under over the years, none of them have ever had a loading space. Um, they've always managed to time when the trucks come to not shut down their business, they figured that part out. Um, so I think you can trust them on the loading side to do that effectively. Um, signage, I would simply add to the testimony that you've heard thus far, um, that because we're even an island in the middle of two highways, you've got people looking at the building, north, east-west, north-south, depending on how you describe these roads, on two separate roads around a four-sided building. The signs have been strategically located so that people coming, assuming we're, we're off-peak and the students aren't on the road, um, at reasonable speeds on those roads, you wanna be able to pick out where you're going relatively early. And the signs are located in the corners of the building that you see depending on which roadway direction you're in. So, I would suggest to you that the rational way finding, uh, signage, it's not overdone, it's incorporated into the architecture, and so it's the color and materials. Um, so while it's excessive in terms of your ordinance, it's not the kind of sign you wanna see on a strip center or in an office building. Um, it's appropriate for this use and the context, uh, that this building is in. Traffic oddly enough, has nothing to do with any of the variants. So, I understand your concerns about traffic as they relate to the site plan and making things work, none of the variances are related to overall traffic flow, uh, that this business is more successful than you may have wanted in your commercial zone. But this is a commercial zone, uh, it is a, a conditional use, we meet all the conditions. Uh, the only reason it's a use variant is because of the, uh, lot, the lot issue of, of uses coming over the property line. So, this ought not to be an unexpected level of traffic, uh, in your Z four zoning district. Um, although I'm not saying you sho- you shouldn't pay attention to making the intersections work and things like that. From a zoning perspective, traffic is what you expect to see in your Z four zone. Now, in, in terms of, of the nature of, of the variances, the B one is the use variant that relates to the uses continuing. Um, you've already granted it, and also I would say as a planner is, the site plan before you was still implementing that same variance. There's no significant change relative to the B one that you've already issued, so I don't think any further testimony on that is need. Um, the, the variety of C twos that we have, and these are the policy Cs, the benefits outweigh any detriments. And under polling, you can remember mental with the difficulty of the circumstances, not pick out each one and figure them out individually. To me, the benefits are pretty clear. Um, visually, this is certainly better than the, uh, the bowling alley was, or empty site is now. Economic benefits, you're, you're getting a vi- a vital, uh, use within your C four zone, as you're, uh, asked to plan and zoning anticipate having. Um, circulation, I think the attention that you heard from the engineer and traffic engineer to making the access points narrower, uh, and, and more effective, I think, is, is useful to the area. Although I acknowledge there's more work to be done with the, uh, the state and the county, um, and not, small improvements to stormwater management. Um, in terms of detriments, as I said, I don't think any of the variances that we've talked about have an impact on any lesser intense use, as in residential neighborhood being impacted. Um, so I, I don't see a measurable, you know, noise vibration, dust, any of those kinds of things that we try and measure, um, as negative impacts of the variance occurring here. So, I would suggest to you that the variances are appropriate. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that is our presentation, on the other way. And I don't know if the chair opens the public before the reports or the reports first.
Mr. Costello, would you like to begin?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, a lot, a lot of important topics tonight that obviously we, we've heard a lot about, I'm, I'm not gonna go through point by point, but just touch on some of those really important topics that may be with some new questions or, or information. For the, the left turn, uh, movement, out of the full movement access onto Delsey Drive, I was gonna ask Mr. Horne, two, two, a couple different things. There, there looks like there's enough room to widen that driveway just right now, to make it wide enough. Is there a reason to just not do that at this time? Is there a detriment to just proposing a, a left turn link with, with the DOT application?
Uh, well, yeah, there is room, as you say, you're talking about right in this area.
Right, to ma- to make it maybe eight to nine feet wide to facilitate the movement.
Yeah, there, there is room, physically room on the site, obviously it adds a little bit impervious, by a lot of it, that's a huge detriment. Um, the, the two concerns we have, one is, it's, it's got a very short stacking, uh, that would be providing those two lanes. So, it's not really, we'll say, the proper depth of stacking for two separate lanes. It doesn't mean it's not effective in any way, but it's, that's one concern. The other is simply the DOT sometimes does not like to have side-by-side vehicles, because one can block the sight view of the other. So, not that they've never approved that, but that's something, that, that, that's, between that and the fact that the capacity that we showed in the report indicates it works with one lane, that's the reason we didn't initially show this to. But if DOT wants it that way, we certainly can.
Well.
You're not opposed to presenting to the DOT the position that has been taken by the town?
Uh, I'm not opposed to that, as long as it doesn't affect something on the site interior that I'm not thinking of. So, the, the only, the only detriment with that is the DOT has a maximum permitted driveway open, uh, opening of fifty feet. So, if we were to add an additional lane, I'm confident that the driveway return radius on Delsey would exceed that fifty foot.
So, we would need a waiver.
Well, slow down, guys. And I mean, and you, you, you're very, obviously, very talented gentleman, because your, your testimony's been excellent. But, but our board engineer is, is quite, uh, camp competent and capable himself. So, he's seen it as a doable, um, alternative. Initially, you essentially acquiesced and agreed, now there's this hold the phone. What, 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 can you do it or can't you? Let me guess this is.
Mr. Allison, the submission, we have to submit to three bodies, here, the county and, and the state. And, uh, the reason I asked Dave about the state is, we will express to them your concern. We don't wanna do the design and then have the state say, no, come back.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at, Mr. Mitz, I'm being a little clumsy, so I apologize, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think the board's prepared to make that a requirement, as a condition of approval, and then if New Jersey DOT says, over our dead body, then maybe you have to come back.
We would, we would, uh, have to take a position that says the NJ DOT is, is their own control, that is.
Well, we understand that, but, but I guess it's, it's, it's a different approach.
We have two applications before this board informs anymore. And the impact of that is to move this project in order to adjust the road entry. I, I think that in fairness to the applicant, we would like to proceed with the design that we have, but we acknowledge to you that we will advise the state, and keep your professionals advised as well, that we are involved with the state. We would advise the state for the, which position. But, uh, this board knows well the, the difficulty it is to dealing with the state. And we're presenting to them what we believe is compliant.
Right. However, the only thing we're asking is the same thing that the state allowed at College Town. Because as you go up past the Chipotle, it's a single lane. As you get up towards the top, you have people making a left, or they're trying to shoot straight across, however, there is a right lane.
And we're not opposed to raising with the state, just that we, my comment is, I, I am, I am concerned with redesigning the entire project, in order to anticipate what the state might do when our professionals are telling us there's gonna be an issue with fifty foot wide, uh, and, and, and otherwise. And so what we're saying to you is, and we'll keep your, your, uh, professionals as part of this, that we will present this as we presented to you, but we will also tell the state that this is the position the town wishes to take. I, I mean, I would hope that, that the town recognize, that this board recognizes that we can't control the state, and I would hope that you view this as a positive target, so, so long as.
Yeah, no, I mean, and that's all appreciated, hon- honestly, but, but Mr. Costello was in the middle of that, and, and, and ultimately, listen, the, the board makes their decision. I mean, they ultimately make, may make, take the position that, listen, you, you gotta go to New Jersey DOT with this, because their experiences, they're the boots on the ground, they live here. But, but, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Mr. Costello. Is there room enough to do this?
Is there, yeah, I do have to acknowledge that there is, the DOT access code does have a fifty foot maximum at the widest point, so, if, uh, I don't have it measured out here, but if we, if, if a lane was added, it may, it may exceed that, and that, which would require a request for a waiver from DOT. When I, when I said room, there's physically room, there's room on the property, it's not constrained up against like somebody else's property. So, I mean, there's physical space out there, but it would still be subject to the DOT access code requirements of the fifty foot maximum.
So, how wide is it now, Mr. Engineer?
It's thirty foot wide at the driveway through, however, at the, uh, physical curve, so. It's thirty feet at the driveway through. And just about fifty feet at the, uh, re- entrances there. So, by adding it, we're gonna go beyond that, and, and like, like the board, uh, professional said, there's physically room there. The applicant is happy to make the request to the DOT, or acknowledge to the DOT the concerns of the board. And what we can do is, and we've done this in other towns with other municipalities, we can copy your board professionals on any submission you make to the DOT. So, your board professionals are working with us in conjunction with the concerns that you have, if it'd be amenable to that.
Mr. Costello. Well, you would be aman- ame- amenable to do that?
I'm sorry?
You would be amenable to do that?
Oh, yeah, I suggested it earlier, be happy to keep them in the, in the loop of it, uh, and we're happy to advise the DOT of what's concerned.
Okay. Is that, uh?
That's acceptable.
Just one more question on that one, so when this goes into DOT, did you do a count of traffic on Delsey Drive as part of determining that full movement access level of service? Or was that just based on typical numbers, people?
Uh, we did do a count.
Okay, so, so the number, so the left turn numbers in your report were based on actual traffic that you used on Delsey Drive?
The, yeah, we, we did a traffic count at this driveway, so all the movements on Delsey, in and out of driveway, and in, and out of driveway, were included. Now, the saved lot building was not occupied at that time, but we did add in projected traffic towards reoccupancy in those numbers.
As a grocery number, I think.
I'm sorry? Right, yeah, we assumed it as a three- I, I grocery store number, that's three that we expected to be.
Yeah, so, uh, so that kind of covers the, at least what I would wanted to add for the left turn. In terms of some of the other site features, the, I had asked about a walkway between the, the shared parking on the, uh, old saved lot site. So, can you, would you mind pointing out where the, you added, you said you added those, but they weren't on the original plan, is that one of those again? On the, where was that?
I was close.
What a saint, huh?
Look, yeah, this, that, yeah.
Make it easier. So, what we did was, I added sidewalk connectivity on, on either side, it's on a tree on this side. That would then provide access across the drive aisle, and then ADA accessible moves to both sides of the store this way. It's happening at a controlled intersection at each side of the site.
Okay. So, in other words, the, 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 the way that it's envisioned, so the parking on the shared, um, spaces is gonna, or the shared spaces on the old grocery store line, are gonna be directed out towards the crosswalks at, at each roadway, at Delsey Drive and Main Street. So, that, I don't know if it's possible to do something more towards the center, 'cause people, you know, folks are gonna walk right down the center. And maybe as an alternative to that, if, 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 if this location does opt to do, have delivery vans, maybe those need to be parked kind of in the center of that, in three spare parking spaces, so that end users are parking at the ends, a- a- or so any visitors of the, of the Chick-fil-A store are parking at the ends portion of the crosswalk.
I'd, I'd really, I'd be happy to work with you on a configuration that, that you find acceptable, or that solution you just presented is logical, 'cause then it pushes people to the power levels, uh, of the property, so I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, so I do think it has been mentioned that at a minimum, from, from some of the discussion, that if, if this location does go forward with, with delivery vans, as many as perhaps ten, there really should be parking in their rebuilt parking lot, leaving the closure spaces, of course, for visiting customers and, and the mobile, and the mobile, uh, the mobile part of the business.
You think that's acceptable, Mr. Mitz?
I'm sorry?
That's acceptable, that cooperation between your engineering?
We understand, again, that this is a variance, so we'll have to write it.
All right, okay, well, thank you.
Um, other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, to add to the discussion.
Mr. Jones.
All right. No, wait here, I'll just speak loudly. Um. Could you tell me about will lighting be dimmed when it's not operational, turned off when it's not operational? And specifically, I'm more going to the lighting levels being greater than the code, and how, when not operational, hoping maybe those become a non-issue.
Yeah, in post-operation hours, that lights, site lighting is dim, uh, just only for security purposes, and, um, and that they're correct.
I smile because this site is next to a car dealership, right?
Yeah.
Right, just being next door should be enough, but, uh.
Yeah. Additionally, there's a bunch of, I know we threw terminology around, I'm gonna call them waivers, um, regarding landscaping. I'm wondering, obviously, the site is constrained, uh, obviously, you are asking for a higher impervious coverage, so that sort of goes hand in hands with the reduction in landscaping. Um, I, personally, I, in looking at the site, feel like there's places where we could fill in some gaps. Um, I can even just think of our, our conversation about crosswalks and the, the parking adjacent to, uh, on the other site, where there is a median, maybe if we put bushes or things in there to then go in hand with preventing people from crossing. So, I guess my point is, in connection with all the waivers, would you be willing to, like, within reason, work with us to just get additional plannings where we can get additional ones?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good, can we take away the ones by the entrance and the exits?
Yes.
So, people can see to get in and get out. I mean, I'm not a big-on-tree person, but every time we have somebody in front of us, to get in and get out, you want a tree. And I think it's totally out of the.
And I think it's totally utterly ridiculous because you're not going to, you're going to sit there trying to get around the tree to get out or get in. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're willing to work with us. I'm just quickly looking. It doesn't look like technically the trees are in the site triangle, but I think as long as they're willing to work with us to relocate things and.
Yeah, it just looks like a head of broccoli.
Get some more where appropriate. Sir?
Yes.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, sorry, one second. I do have, I guess, there's various comments that are like, I feel like they're just will complies. I do want to just, I don't need to go through them, but you've obviously read our letter calling the high-level ones. You know, there's some about EV parking spaces. I'm sure we'll just address those. I do believe that you've addressed the criteria regarding the three variances, what I'm going to call three variances. The rest of those are waivers. I will add that I, you know, of course, it's the board's decision. Considering the commercial nature of the area, I don't feel like the signs are too large. There is the question of number, which I think you guys, we can talk about it more. But I don't think the size of the signs is out of character, too much for the area. That's really all I got.
So essentially, you're okay with the professionals' letter but for what was discussed and spread on the record tonight?
Yes, correct.
All right, well, thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to supplement one point of testimony. Twenty-five employees per shift. Seventy-five potential jobs?
Yeah, correct, so and half of those are not going on the employee system.
There's an expectation, and Eric, the company is more than happy to hire locally if they're able to.
Correct, that's their premise.
So there's the potential of seventy-five additional jobs, if not more, some of them, about half being applied. And with that, I appreciate the board's time and your interest in comments. And for any questions that we can answer.
Any questions from the board for you?
And I have one other statement too, simply just to make sure. I heard about cross-parking easements, but I want to make sure there's cross-parking easements, cross-access easements, all those things to provide.
The cross-access easement is already in place. And that was a follow-up from the board. We, one of the positions of the board previously was, you wanted to have it further defined. And that was done prior to this application. And this will not be a cross-easement for parking, but will be a lease.
An agreement.
So you'll be happy to provide documentation to your solicitor on that.
Sorry about that.
Do I have a motion to open this to the public? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter and this matter only? Please come forward. Since I don't see anybody from the public, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have. Let's close with the board.
I'm so lost.
Well, Mr. Chairman or my solicitor, are you looking to put a vote tonight or you want things to be, other things to be taken care of before we vote on it?
No, we need a motion whether yes or no, conditions.
Right, but I think to Mr. Santora's point, if I may, Mr. Chair, what we do from time to time, and what we've done tonight are a thick sin to do, as they say, is to move forward, and certain things would be contingent, contingent on the applicant working to finalize, right, with our professionals, to finalize the landscaping. The lighting looks like it's not going to be an issue. There was some additional concern Mr. Costin brought up and Mr. Jones about some of the delivery truck parking. That's also got to get ironed out. That's also going to be a condition of the approval. So some of those things are kind of baked in if there was a motion to approve, which there always is, and then it's either gets enough affirmative votes or it doesn't, and then that, you know, that's the tally.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'm always making the motions. I would move that we approve the variance with the.
Well, it's a motion to approve the amended site plan.
That's where I was going, what he said.
Preliminary and final. Well, there are some use variance characteristics and some additional variance relief. And that was all spread on the record, so that would be called out in the resolution, but we're not going to take the time to talk about every single thing because we just took some time.
Do I have to start at the beginning again? Yes, that's my motion.
Before that approval? Okay, no, no.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter?
Four.
Mr. Santora?
I'm four.
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Ms. Wyman?
Four.
Mr. Lopez?
Against.
Mrs. Camiola?
Four.
Mr. Muneen?
Four.
I'd have certain members of my family.
All right, well, thank you.
Chairman members, thank you. Appreciate you taking the time and the input.
You're trying, we're trying. We'll get it done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, since we have the reports, we have the workshop.
Yeah, I do. She helped. Okay, the planning and zoning workshop was on the ninth. I was not able to be here, but I was able to acquire the information. The applicant is Dr. Horton. They've done a lot of construction in the area for Martin Luther King Drive and looking to seek to construct seventy-eight townhomes on that. And, yeah, don't, I don't know if there was any, if it's, is that carried over? Or, I mean, they're still working on that? They have a lot more to go to, okay. So it's not, it's not happening right away?
Oh, well, Mr. Chairman, yes, indeed. So I've got a couple of things. Try to stay in order here. PVA Investments, amended site plan approval, that's known as Resolution 23-12. So that is, of course, you know, our monthly visit from PVA, and for your consideration.
All right, do I have a motion to approve said Resolution R23-12 for PVA Investments?
Thomas.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Santora?
Four.
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Ms. Wyman?
Four.
Mr. Lopez?
Four.
Ms. Camiola?
Four.
Mr. Muneen?
Four.
Mr. Chairman members, if I may, next would be Resolution 23-11. And this is the use variance along with preliminary and final site plan. And this was for South Jersey Gas, that photovoltaic solar installation that was on Union Ave, as I referenced. So for your consideration, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do I have a motion for R23-11?
Okay, go.
You got it first?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Santora?
Four.
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Ms. Wyman?
Four.
Mr. Lopez?
Four.
Mrs. Camiola?
Four.
Mr. Muneen?
Four.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you.
All right, since there's no old business, new business.
Did you guys all get the Resolution 61-23 to adopt a sustainable land use pledge? It was sent.
I got it via email.
Yeah, I was going to say via email, they sent a thing on, when I got it, it sent a thing saying we should spread it around to our members. I got it, and so I didn't know if there was anybody that didn't get it. Okay, fine. I was going to give you one, but now I don't have to. So there.
Our next meeting is June 15th. If I'm here, it's four, five. Don't give me a cake and one of the cakes. Six. We got four confirmed.
Maybe five.
Maybe five.
Okay.
June 15th, I'll probably be there in ten.
If you cannot make it, please let me know.
Why would you tell everybody?
Wait in advance because of the independent freight's going to be in front of us and they're going to want to forward. All right?
Yeah, I, I will be there.
Okay. All right.
At least that's my plan.
Something else, I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Do you need the clock again? No, okay, I'll put it with my stalker today.
Thank you.
You need to keep it? I got so many pens.
I could never, I'll never have enough.
It's a schoolteacher thing, you know?